Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice Chair Blair.
Here.
Commissioner Waters.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Sarkisian.
Here.
Commissioner Noble.
Here.
Um, Chair Goss and Commissioner Swop are excused. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of minutes for regular meeting, planning and zoning, February fourteenth, twenty forty? Twenty twenty-four.
I'll move to approve the minutes from February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, consideration of public comments, those wishing to address the commission should fill out a request form in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda. There will be no comments followed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The commission may not respond to speakers during the during the call to public. The commission may direct the staff to study the matter or request that, matter of fact, be placed on the agenda. You want to do it in public?
No, we do not.
Okay. New business. Preliminary plat SB twenty-three zero 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 four, Keno subdivision, tract nineteen eighty-three C. Requests from Canyon State Enterprises LLC property owners for the approval of preliminary plat division known as Kingman subdivision, tract nineteen eighty-three C, which includes ninety-six residential lots, one parcel dedicated for storm water control, and includes parcels thirty-twenty dash zero two, dash one eighty-nine, three-twenty dash zero two, dash one ninety, and three-twenty dash zero two, dash two zero two, totaling twenty point twelve twelve acres. And as further described, as a portion of the southwest quarter, section five, township twenty-one north, range sixteen west of the G and SRM, Mojave County, Arizona.
Chair, I need to recuse myself from this item.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Blair and members of the commission. As, as you described, this is a preliminary plat SB, our, our application number SB twenty-three dash zero zero four for the Keno subdivision, tract nineteen eighty-three C. Rosa Garcia, our, our staff planner, has prepared the staff report for you, and I think she's prepared to make that presentation to you uh, describing this matter. Also want to note that the applicant is here to be able to respond to any questions or comments that the, the commission has. And with that, I'll bring, bring it to Rosa.
Thank you.
Hello, members of the commission. Before you, you have, as Mike said, a preliminary plat requests for approval for the Keno subdivision, tract nineteen eighty-three C. The property owner is Joel Jules on behalf of Canyon Enterprises and Big Red Construction. The applicant is Jedidai Noble, project engineer on behalf of, of civil works engineering. As I mentioned, the request is for preliminary plat approval for the subdivision to be known as Keno subdivision, tract nineteen eighty-three C, consisting of ninety-six residential lots, three parcels dedicated to storm water control on approximately twenty point twelve acres. This is a surrounding zoning for the areas. You can see the subject area is zone R one six. We have some commercial and rural residential, residential or the R two zone is a higher density. And some R one six across Bank Street there as well. These are some site photos. This is from Rainbow Drive looking southwest. Then we have from Evans Street looking south. And then from Evans looking southeast. These are some existing utilities and the area map here. As you can tell, there's three separate parcels here. Based on the most recent ownership data, the one in the middle says is owned by Big Red Construction, and the other two are by Canyon States. The findings of fact, the property is relatively flat. It does have some sloping, gradual sloping to the northwest. The zone is X, which is outside of the two percent annual chance floodplain zone. There's an existing eight inch and three inch water line along Keno. A six inch water line on Rainbow Street, sixteen inch water line on the west side of Bank, and fifteen inch sewer line on Keno Avenue. And Rainbow Avenue. Sorry, Keno Avenue and Rainbow Street. As you saw in the previous picture, there's plenty of opportunities to link up to the utilities there. The site is accessed from Keno Avenue, then via Melody Street, then east and west on Daphne, then south to Evans and Brook Street respectively. Keno is a two lane paved road with forty-five foot right of way. Melody, Evans, and Brook are also improved with the fifty foot right of way and sidewalk curb and gutter. There will be additional access provided west of Rainbow Drive with a fifty foot right of way with the existing fifty foot right of way, and it also has a current paving curb and gutter. And this is going to be via Pert Avenue, which is a street that would be a part of the proposed subdivision. The development history, this one's a little bit interesting here. So it was annexed as part of the annexation in two thousand, and then it was zoned to a rural residential. The areas around were rezoned from our residential to R one six for development of single family subdivisions. In two thousand and five, it was part of a larger rezone for the Keno Ranch subdivision, which, which was to be comprised of ten commercial lots, twenty multiple family lots, and a hundred and eleven single family lots on thirty-eight point five seven acres. The proposed Keno Ranch subdivision was to be developed in five phases. It would work, it was to have lots ranging from roughly forty-seven point five square feet to sixty, fifty-nine thousand square feet. And that was going to be the, and it was going to include a multifamily residential portion. Both of these were approved as a the plat was approved for both these in March two thousand and four. The proposal also included ten commercial lots, which were approved in February. A one-year extension of time was granted for the Keno Ranch subdivision. And the final plat for phase A was completed in October two thousand and five. Phase B was submitted and comments were received on that were, comments were relayed to the applicant, but there was no subsequent submittal. The Keno Ranch subdivision plat expired, preliminary plat expired on May two thousand and seven. The portion to the northeast were rezoned two thousand and four from RR to R one six for the development of a single family subdivision. And the subject area that were, that will, that is up for approval today was formally included as part of this subdivision as phase C of the Keno Ranch subdivision. Something particularly interesting about this subdivision was that for the preliminary plat approval, there were and the final plat approval, there were no assurances. So there's no property escrow assurances that would preclude this area from being utilized in this manner today. So that was, the Keno Ranch subdivision was approved and the final plat was approved, but the subdivision as a whole was never assured, only the phase A. So the rest was not is not under any kind of cash escrow or property agreement. So that actually makes this request allowable. This was just how the proposed preliminary plat for Keno Ranch subdivision was, the one that expired. So you can see there was, it was a larger development all the way out to Bank Street. As of today, you can see that the, it has been portioned off. And the area immediately to the south of this is now commercial. So it does have a different configuration than it used to have. This is the final plat for part A of the subdivision that, that did get completed and was assured at the preliminary plat stage. And this is the final plat, and the assurances for this were released. It's just kind of like a zoomed in version. There is something interesting about this one in that the numbers for the lots are not able to stand alone for the blocks. So that's something that because of the history of, of this area might have to be addressed on for the proposed approval for the lower part of, of this area. Like I was saying, the block numbering, I think I have to show you what the proposed is. So let me let me show you the proposed. So this is the proposed preliminary plat for Keno subdivision. And this is like a closer, closer one. As you can see, it goes all the way down right before that commercial zoning area you saw earlier. And there's some parcels that have been dedicated to drainage, that larger parcel there on the side. And the, the streets are no longer there are some entrances that have been closed off since because of the way that it's been developed and portioned off. There's no guarantee that the connections would make it all the way out to Bank or the other street below airway. So this with the two connections that it, that it has, as proposed here and he, and it's up here. You don't see it, but in the last one, if we go back here would be sufficient for the area here, as we're not able to tell how this would be developed. Okay, now I'm going to go back to the analysis. So the current block numbering doesn't provide sufficient width to any proposed lot to allow for two-tiered blocks. The block numbering will have to be corrected. The, some of the block numbering is there's one row of blocks and it's labeled as a block, and then the next one is only one row, even though there might be two adjacent rows next to each other. So there, it doesn't, because of the numbering, there's no true blocks that are two-tiered, so that's going to have to be corrected. The project engineer will have to receive a, submit a petition of exception from section four point three one to allow one-tier lot instead of two-tier lots, which is normally required. And this one is for the perimeter block. As you can see here, this exception is supported by staff. But it's not a, a two-tier block like this, but because of the type of subdivision that it is, it would be supported. And also the previous development that has occurred in the area. As you saw from the previous phase A, the lot numbering was a little bit different there, and it's also a little bit different in this one. So we would just ask that it be sequential for the blocks, like this block to avoid any confusion. So the block up here, both of these, this area here would have two lot ones, which could make it confusing. So we would just ask clarity on that. The lot numbering not to go across streets or the block numbering not to cross the streets. There's five new interior streets that are proposed with the subdivision, east and west, east and west, we have Dylan, Pert Avenue, Demi Avenue, and north and south, we have Brook, Evans, Melody. I put Brook in there twice, sorry. So we have Derek here, Pert, Dylan, Brook, and Evans. Dylan and Demi would be new street names that do not appear to duplicate any, duplicate anywhere else in the Kingman area. Pert and Melody would be continuations of existing streets. They're kind of actually really far from the proposed subdivision across a couple of streets. So they, the engineer knows they do not connect to the same name streets. However, they're generally consistent with the natural alignment. If there were to be a suggestion would be to maybe change the endings to avoid confusion, but they're generally consistent. Draining and grading. The, there was a preliminary drainage study submitted for this subdivision, and it's affected by primarily two basins. And we will talk about that in a bit here. The site consists of semi-consolidated dirt and low-lying vegetation without any trees. The soil group falls within the Dutch flat soil category. You can see here we have, I guess you can't see the contour lines, but the, the water usually pools around here before going out to this drainage detention area here. So there's an easement here to allow the water to go there. And then we have that large proposed parcel that's going to go here. So the, generally the water goes here and here, and then pools a little bit here before coming out here. Then you can see we have, sorry, I, I know it said one parcel, but we actually have three. This is a small parcel here. I don't know if you can see where my mouse is right here. And then we have another drainage parcel here, and then this is like a larger basin for drainage purposes. And most of that drainage is going to be going along the streets out here. Water and sewer mains will need to be extended to serve the site. Based on that previous site photograph, you can see that most, mostly all up to the proposed subdivision. There appears to be, the water and sewer demand is not known. It will require approval from MUC when there's a parcel that's already divided. It does require additional approval. And there appears to be water line and sewer line paybacks on North Rainbow with the street water and sewer mains. The utilities, they just have to be underground. The recommendation is that the preliminary plat of Keno subdivision be approved with the recommended conditions. These first ones are just basic conditions that are under subdivision ordinance. The conditions under which the plat is approved shall not be changed prior to the expiration date. Approval is valid for twenty-four months. This one says that there could be an extension of time. If the subdivider does not process the final plat, they can ask for extension of time. Subdivision improvements should adhere to Kingman development standards and all the other applicable standards. If applicable, any tract issue shall be resolved to the subdivision sharing the tract number of a previously expired subdivision for clarity purposes. Agency comments received from this process, from this preliminary plat process shall be included in the final plat review process. The city surveyor shall find the description of the subject area as included through the parcel descriptions as accurate. The final plat should includes, include a revised vicinity map showing the township range and section. The engineer will need to submit a petition of exception for the one-tier lots in the perimeter. The proposed block designations will need to be revised to reflect true lots. Lot numbers will need to be revised to allow for sequential ordering of adjacent contiguous lots, which do not cross right-of-way boundaries. This one just says that we're allowing it to not start with one. There's no nothing in the ordinance that says that it has to start with one, but this is just to allow the specific remuneration because of the history of the, of the area. The subdivision streets will need to be improved with pavement, curb, gutter, and five-foot wide sidewalk. Rainbow Drive will need to be fully improved with additional five-foot wide sidewalk. The layout must be in general conformance with the Kingman area plan. They should provide water and sewer line paybacks if applicable. Sewer manholes and fire hydrant spacing shall meet the design standards at the time of final submittal. In the final drainage reports, any references to the Keno Ranch subdivision shall be reconciled to provide clear drainage assessment for the proposed Keno subdivision area, which is a twenty point twelve acre site. And we have the decision options for you. Recommend approval of Keno subdivision nineteen eighty-three. Preliminary plat with conditions as recommended by staff. Recommend approval with modifications to the staff recommended conditions. Recommend the item be tabled if the commission finds that there needs to be some revision, major revision, or denial of the request to approve Keno subdivision nineteen eighty-three preliminary plat. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Is there any questions, Scott?
Yeah, I do have one question. You showed that, that, that easement that led up out of the property roughly north. It was the next slide, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, and it yeah.
I'll find it.
There, right there.
Who owns that, that parcel where the, where the water is draining to? Is that city or is it guaranteed that that won't be, it won't go away and be developed in the future?
That's a good question. Generally, all this, the runoff that you receive, that historically has been received on the parcel will need to continue to be received when the area is developed, and the same amount of runoff will need to come off of the parcel. If they were to develop this, it would make sense for them to use the existing drainage pond as opposed to creating a new one elsewhere on the parcel or redirecting that water to a, a non-historical area.
So is that part of phase A that was?
This was, this is just how the water pools and where the natural flow has been. My understanding is that engineering would need to have had evaluated the, the amount of retention that would be needed on the site for that specific project. So I don't know how that would correlate with this A portion, since it was supposed to be part of a bigger plan there, but that's something that we could definitely address in that final plat review. It seems like we have sufficient retention on, on the proposed with that large drainage basin there. So I would relay that information to engineering and see what if, if that would affect how much is being received or how much needs to be redirected off-site.
Okay. And just for my bearings, the, the closest park would be Wallack Ranch. Is that right? Community park there? Is it? Is there a park nearby or?
Let's see.
Bank and Keno. I know Keno runs a
It's not on the, so it'd be a little farther ways from here.
And Keno, sorry, Keno is, it does have a sidewalk down part of it, right? I know it gets kind of sketchy, at least by Wallack even. There's kind of a break in the sidewalk from
This should be developed with the sidewalk as it was part of the Keno A preliminary plat and approval Keno nineteen eighty-three. There is a closer view of that here. You can see they've also dedicated per note B a public, a public utility, public roadway and utility purposes. So that's what this parcel B is for. And then we have the additional non-legal easement there.
It's like if you're a child on a bike, the closest park would probably be Wallack, I'm thinking. And one other thing, there was a mention that there are non-access easement. I understand phase A actually was constructed with those parcels or developed, planned with those parcels abutting against the roads or there wasn't the double stack block like you were talking about. I did, it sounds like we didn't have to resort to using a non-access easement to prevent, you know, egress and ingress through those lots. Sounds like it was an option that was proposed, but it wasn't actually used.
Are you referring to this part here?
Section four point three, if you go about halfway through the second Section four point three, if you go about halfway through the second parcel, it sounds like the applicant or the developer suggested using a non-access easement, but it, I believe it says that they didn't have to go so far. And I know in the past, we've approved one of these, and we used the non-access easement to prevent, you know, any chance of somebody using one of these lots as a road on the edge, so.
This one has it here, that little dashed line. This was section A, and then the proposed also has it. It was requested by engineering that they actually add this here.
Okay, great.
Okay, there we go. They have it here, the dashed here, dashed here, and even on the side here.
So that's a narrow, like a five-foot parcel that is just used to prevent access through there?
Oh, the non-vehicle or access easement is actually going to be part of that lot, it's just that, and it's a one-foot. Usually, people might build walls on it, but it just, it's part of the parcel, it just makes, designates that vehicles can't traverse through there.
Okay, great. My concern was just it, we've done, we've used this solution in the past for pretty much the exact same scenario, so I'm not sure why we wouldn't use it here, but it sounds like we're using it, so. All right, that's all the questions.
I'm sorry, which?
There was another development over by roughly the Little Goodyear Shop on Beverly, kind of behind there, abutting a mobile home park, and we had a pretty tight subdivision like this, but we used a non-access easement where there was a, like a single lot block that was abutting against a road.
Yeah, that's going to be the, the same there.
Okay, yeah, my question was whether or not it was included, and it's.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and then you can't really see it, but it's this dashed line here, along that line there, and it's here and here.
That's all the questions.
For sure.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Staff, if you'd like to speak? All right, discussion?
It looks pretty straightforward. It seems to conform with the, the prior plans almost exactly, you know, if you look at the shape of the roads and everything, so, nope.
Yeah, I believe with getting their final decisions down, knowing them, they'll, they'll have everything in line with it, from what staff and engineering and everybody wants.
If I may, that's, that's one of the things that I want to emphasize that Rosa made, I, hopefully, I think, I believe Rosa made clear that any other issues that we would have can be dealt with and settled when the final plat is brought forward, and these conditions that may need to be modified, or some added to it, to be able to clarify some of these issues that came up.
Yes.
I will move to approve SB twenty-three dash zero 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 four, Keno subdivision tract nineteen eighty-three dash C with all recommendations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to the preliminary plat. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
You opposed?
No, I said aye, I was a little late, sorry.
All right, motion passed, thank you very much. All right, announcements by Commission members, limited to announcements of availability for tennis at conferences and seminars, requests for agenda items for future meetings, and requests for reports from staff. No discussion on any other items.
I move to adjourn.
Second.